Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Father God, we come right now before your presence, first of all, saying humbly, thank you, God, that, Father, we still have activities of our limbs, that we are not in the hospital, we are still able to associate and move around. We thank you for your grace and your protecting mercy. Now, Father, we pray for this meeting that is about to begin, God. We pray, first of all, for this collective body, God, of council members and believers, God. First of all, Father, meet their personal needs in their personal life, God, because each one of them are sacrificing to be here today, even though they have concerns. Help them today to be on one accord and to be lack-minded. Let no strife, ill feelings, or any negativity enter into this room on today. Help them, God, to do the things that they said they would do collectively to help this city and the people that dwell therein. Now bless, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend Sartain. May we have the roll call, please? Here?
Present.
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 President. Thank you. We don't have any proclamations today, but typically today, we would be with our friends from the Gift of Life because of breast cancer and ovarian cancer and prostate cancer awareness months. They will be with us next week, but I was asked to make an announcement for them, and they were not aware that we were allowing people into chambers. So I would like to say that our good friends Regina Rogers and Norma Sampson at the Gift of Life program will be receiving a proclamation next week for Breast Cancer Awareness Month and to announce this year's special angels among us, Honorise Sherry Brennick, breast cancer survivor Joanne Brown, breast cancer survivor Jan Hayes, Debbie Minyard, breast cancer survivor Denise Plummer, Bonnie Vessel, Maureen Winchell, and Tracy Young. However, in the meantime and observance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as well as September ovarian and prostate cancer awareness months, I want to reinforce the importance of cancer prevention and early detection through screenings. For nearly thirty years, Gift of Life has done an outstanding job of making available life-saving education and free breast and prostate cancer screenings and diagnostic tests to the uninsured, uninsured individuals in all of southeast Texas and especially our Beaumont residents. Gift of Life has encouraged the community to get in the pink and teal in support of Gift of Life's mission by hosting fundraising events that include walks in the neighborhoods, our local parks, social media opportunities, and pink outset schools, businesses, and churches. Also, on Saturday, October 31st, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., Gift of Life will host its Julie Richardson Proctor 10th Anniversary Legacy Celebration Social Media Party Live Facebook Event. God bless our Gift of Life friends, and we look forward to seeing them next week. Thank you all so much, and we do appreciate the Gift of Life and all they do for our citizens in Beaumont and our entire region and just reminding us how important it is to be screened. So, like I said, we don't have any proclamations today or presentations, so now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comment today on scheduled agenda items 1 through 4 or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you haven't already done so and would like to speak on one of these items, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer at the rear of the room. She will hand it to the city clerk. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you would like to speak on item number five, we will have a public hearing on that item, and I will also open up the microphone at the end of the meeting for any discussion or comments you would like to make to the council. Is there anyone for 1 through 4 or the consent agenda? Okay, there appears to be no one. So I'll close the floor. Council, can I have a motion, please, on the consent agenda? Thank you. There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item G is money for the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and out of that list, one of the line items is for the homeless coalition, roughly ninety-three hundred dollars. What are we getting in return for this?
Well, we definitely have staff that attends that meeting, I think, on a monthly basis. There's Chris Boone here. And then we did have two council members that were a part of it, and I don't know if they are any longer or not.
So, good afternoon. So, the homeless coalition, which is operated out of the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, as the manager mentioned, does meet monthly. In addition, in order to receive HUD funding for a variety of homeless relief programs, that organization has to be in place to serve as a, essentially, a coordinating board. In addition, they do coordinate the point-in-time count for the homeless count. Again, all these activities are required by HUD to receive any of that HUD funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. So, how much HUD funding actually flows to the city of Beaumont through that avenue?
Correct. So currently, this year, we are not receiving any direct funding through that conduit, but in past years, we've received homeless funding that we funnel to groups like TAN or other nonprofits that serve the homeless. But currently this year, none of that funding for this year.
How long has it been since we've received any HUD funding through that avenue?
I would say within the last three years.
Okay. Do you or someone from your staff go to these meetings monthly?
Yes, sir. So the last was a virtual meeting last Thursday, and we do attend on a monthly basis, yes, sir.
Okay. I did attend a couple of these meetings. My impression at that time was their primary focus was the point-in-time count, and I know they spend a lot of time on that. And my impression was that, of course, that they are a regional planning commission for all three counties. Beaumont needed to have a focus on homelessness inside the city, and I greatly appreciate the mayor creating a task force for that purpose, and thank you for naming me the chair of that. But, you know, as far as the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, like Councilmember Neil, I'm a little confused as to what they're doing from that aspect for us, and right now, it doesn't sound, based on what you're saying, like it's a lot.
In terms of direct funding going through us, the city, you know, to our nonprofit partners, I agree, this year, it's not a lot. But again, you know, we've had, I think we had an ad hoc committee meet a couple times with Councilman Tate and yourself, maybe a few weeks ago, or, excuse me, a few months ago now. And again, I think there's a lot of overlap with that group, as well as our group, I think, moving forward. And again, I know we're obviously more focused on Beaumont, whereas they may be more regional. But again, I think we'll have many of the same partners at the table moving forward. But again, going forward, in order to, you know, tap into potential HUD funding, we've got to have this coordinating board. They refer to it as the Continuum of Care Board, but we do need to have that in place. So even though we're not receiving funding this year, if we, you know, want to receive funding in future years, we would need to have that board established.
Okay.
And we have to participate.
Yes, ma'am.
And I might say too, because I've been to the meetings recently, not this particular one, but the other ones, there's been other, after, like, the pandemic, COVID-19, different funding resources that we've gotten through the Southeast Texas Regional Planning that help our citizens as well. It might not be for the homeless section of it, but it is for the general citizenry.
Correct. There's senior activities, there's a variety of funding we do receive through the board.
And the one that they helped people with rent that couldn't pay their rent and that kind of thing.
Correct, that's correct.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
Item E. I'm sorry, not E, item C. Purchase of the ambulance box. I'm all for having to replace something that is out of date and has passed the period of its useful life. But last week, I had occasion to observe an ambulance that I was not familiar with on a call here in Beaumont. It was an ambulance that was branded Kurtz. And I inquired as to who was Kurtz and why are they running around the streets of Beaumont answering calls? And initially, nobody knew who Kurtz was. And then upon further inquiry, it was determined that they were part of an ambulance strike force that was brought into the city of Beaumont because of staffing issues that we appear to have in our EMS due to COVID and other reasons, and that we're actually about down twenty percent of our manpower in that department right now, which is concerning to me. But what I'd like to know is, you know, why was council not advised that we were having an issue of staffing with our EMS and that this strike force had been created? Because, you know, citizens see these ambulances out on the streets, and they don't know who they are. You know, they're going to call us, and they want to know. So what can we do to help our communication be better on that?
This item's not posted, and these questions have been answered in an email that I provided to the full council, and I'll be happy to answer any other ones, but the city attorney would advise you, sit in the proper place, discuss it when it's not posted properly.
Okay. Because this is for a box that was bought for our ambulances, so it's not posted as the strike team, and that was through...
And I think most of y'all know, we've done this after, we did this after Hurricane Harvey, we did this after Emelda. So speaking of facts, we've done this since July. So if he hadn't noticed a difference until last week, that tells you something. But I'll answer any other questions in the email, I'm not going to say anything else today.
Well, Mr. Manager, I think that when I ask you a question about why the council wasn't advised, and you're assuming that we all knew, I don't think that that response is appropriate, but we can have this conversation later.
I will say that this was done through emergency management, and I talked to the press about it several times. And if I didn't advise the council, I apologize. But there was no intent, it was just to keep staffing going because of COVID, and it was done through the state of Texas, through our partners at the state. And I talked to the Enterprise 612 and everyone about it more than once, but if it didn't get to the entire council, I apologize, because it was done through emergency management. Okay? Is that all? All right. All in favor of the motion for approval of the consent agenda, please say aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Mayor and council, the first item is actually a discussion item to review and discuss a proposed Terrell Park detention project. And Joe Majalani, who's the general manager of Drainage District 6, is here and will come forward to discuss the potential project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. DD6 staff and the city staff, they've been working together over the years to improve drainage in the city of Beaumont and also to minimize the risk of flooding. Today, I want to talk to you about this Terrell Park Detention 2 project. It is a very important project to the city of Beaumont and to DD6. The city, the district is planning on submitting a joint application to Texas General Land Office for funding under the Hurricane Harvey CDBG MIT competition. The project deadline is the end of the month. DD6 will be taking the lead on this application, and the estimated cost for this project is almost fifty million dollars. The project is located on the southern part of city Beaumont, on the east side of the Hebron Bio, and near the city-constructed wetlands. Currently, the city owns six hundred acres, and this is a perfect location for the project. The benefit area, I'm going to give you just the boundaries. It's the southern of Washington, west of Martin Luther King Jr., and east of Highway 124, and north of Marsh Bio, Weldon Marsh Bio. It's a large area. Also, this is a directive benefit for the area. The indirect benefit of the area also is south of Hebron Bio, south of the site down Hebron Bio. General information on the project, currently, the site is six hundred acres, and after the project is completed, you're looking at three hundred fifty acre of wet area. Just to give you the magnitude of this project, it's a three-point-five-million cubic feet. A cubic yard will be excavated. And hopefully, we can take this three-and-a-half-million cubic feet to the city Beaumont landfill to be used as land cover. It's good material. Also, when the project is completed, you're looking at twenty-one-hundred-acre feet of storage. This is equivalent to six hundred and eighty-four-million gallons. This is massive, massive storage. Also, you're looking at nine feet average depth for the detention pond. Taylor's Bio, the water elevation runs at two feet. The bottom of the pond will be three-foot elevation, which means it's going to be dry bottom during normal conditions. Part of the project is, we have to come up with one percent local match. The district will assume the full match, which is almost half million dollars. The duration for this project is three years with good weather. And when the project is completed, Hebron Bio will see a lower water surface elevation as a result of the storage. So it's have direct impact on improving drainage in the surrounding area. You're probably going to ask, where is Terrell Park Detention 1? Five, six years ago, the district put detention between Seale Road and Phelps Road in this area. Wasn't as big as this one here, but, so, this project is massive. What we're planning on doing is taking water from Hebron Bio, divert this detention pond, hold it, and when the conditions arrive, put it back in Hebron Bio. Three-quarter of a billion-gallon storage, it's a massive storage, so. Any questions you might have, I'm normally glad to answer.
Go ahead. Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Getz, Councilman Muton.
About the soccer fields.
That's correct. When the project is complete, what I said in the slide right here, dry bottom in normal conditions mean if the city or any soccer association decided to adopt this project, and they want to put recreation activities, you should be able to utilize it, yes, sir.
In terms of size and scope, how does that compare to the soccer field?
Soccer field is around a hundred acres.
How many?
One hundred.
And this is?
Six hundred.
So six times the size of the soccer field detention.
Well, the wet area is not going to be six hundred, it's going to be three hundred and fifty, because you have to build a four-to-one slope to maintain it and levees, so you can drive around it to maintain it.
And the wet area will be wet all the time?
No.
No?
It's going to be dry.
Okay.
When the water in the water rises, it's going to spill over to the pond and fill up the pond. Maximum elevation will be nine feet, and when the conditions arrive, water starts to recede, it will feed back to the body.
What's there now? What is there now?
It's city-owned property, it's vacant property.
Just empty property?
That's correct.
Wooded, or just, what is it?
Yes, I believe it's wooded, yes, sir.
Councilman Muton?
Dr. Joe. Okay. You stated that you have something right now, Seale Road and Phelps Road. What location will this pond be?
This detention pond?
Yes.
This is 124, this is a wetlands. Terrell Park right here, this is city Beaumont wetlands right here, and Hebron Bio divide this. City purchased both properties twenty-some years ago, in nineteen, I believe, nineteen ninety or something like that. And they built the wetland on one side, and the bio really separated two properties. Access to this property is very limited. You have to build a bridge over the bio, or you have to come back down away from the back.
So you would build a bridge?
No, 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 no. All we're going to do is, first of all, apply, and hopefully, this is, you have to compete. And if we were successful, we have to go through a bunch of permitting processes, the core engineers and FEMA and a bunch of them. And if there's a wetland, there's a slight wetland issue at the bottom, either we have to mitigate or we have to avoid the wetland area. But most of the site, it appears from the record mass, it should be in good condition. We will excavate, we excavate the site, three hundred fifty acres of the site. Hopefully, we can take it to the landfill, they can use it as land cover, because they need the material, and shape it, and have a control structure at Hebron Bio upstream and control structure downstream, so we can take water from Hebron Bio and drain it back to the body.
Okay. My other question would be for citizens that might be listening, that live in Terrell Park area. What relief as to future flooding, are problems with Terrell Park holding water? Will it help the residents in that area?
Hebron Bio today is at capacity, and you cannot deepen it, you cannot widen it, because there's existing restate on both sides of the Hebron Bio. Only way you can relieve flooding is either take it to the Nature's River or store it on site. So by providing this large storage right here, will drop the water elevation in Hebron Bio, drop it, so the area can drain much better in the area. It's going to be a long-time process. It's probably going to be years to two years to get the funding, and three years for construction, so you're looking at roughly around five years. It will provide direct improvement for this area and drainage, and also, it will help downstream, because the overall water surface elevation in the bio will drop by foot during heavy rain conditions, which is a big deal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Majalani, tell me again, the material that you excavate out of there, what would your plans be to do with that material?
The city landfill, on daily basis, they have to provide cover over. Every time they put trash, they have to provide cover, and they have either to move it, haul it from nearby area, or possibly, I'm not going to say by it, they have to provide cover. This way, we can make it available for the city to use it as cover for the trash. Each end of the day, the city has to cover the trash. So this is, they can use it, and if they don't need all of it, we have to find a place to put it. It's a lot of material, three-point-five cubic yard.
In terms of recreational opportunities, there's an increased desire of equestrian activities out at Terrell Park. In normal conditions, once this is complete, would this be something suitable for horseback riding?
The bottom of the, like I said, normal flow down Hebron Bio is two feet. The reason two feet, because right by Inocosa Canal, where Hebron Bio feeds into Terrell Bio and Terrell Bio feeds into the Inocosa Canal, they have what they call saltwater barrier to prevent the migration of the saltwater back into the marshland. So they lock it at two feet. So that's why you, all the time, people see water in these bays, why do we have water in the bays? Having rained in weeks, they control the flow, because the rice farmer also use the water in the bio. So in normal conditions, you have two feet in the bio, the bottom of the field, three feet. So you're always, under normal condition, the bottom of the detention pond will be dry. We're also going to design it in a way, as you move away from the pond, from the Hebron Bio, we're going to slope it uphill, so the eastern part of the pond will be even higher than three feet. We haven't designed the project, but this is the concept. The eastern part of the project, probably the half-eastern part of the project, will be dry most.
So the answer is yes, it would be fine for horseback riding?
The answer is yes, and again, the DD6 willing to have interlocal agreements with any agency for recreation, that's another issue.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Majalani, I believe you said this at the beginning, but I don't see it on the screen. The DD6 is putting forth almost half a million, estimated cost is forty-nine million.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I missed that part, thank you.
There's one percent local match, and we, since the city, we haven't worked out the details, have the property to share with DD6. We're willing to put the funds, engineering, the construction management, and the future maintenance of this project, which is going to be probably massive on a regular basis.
And what's the timeline?
The timeline, we, the deadline for the application is end of the month. We're going to submit at the end of the month, and we have to compete against other agencies. And if we're successful, it'll probably take him almost a year to process the application, and we have to get permits, and the construction timeframe is three years, roughly, three to five years.
Okay.
Four to five years, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're excited about the project, and hopefully, we...
Hopefully, you will.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. That was a discussion item, so if you want to take us to item number one, please.
Mayor and council, item number one is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Jefferson County Drainage District Number 6 for the proposed Terrell Park Detention Project and to submit an application to the Texas General Land Office for funding for the project. We appreciate Dr. Majalani being here and his work on this, as well as his staff and ours. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You have heard the reading of item number one. Are there any questions on this item? Or may I have a motion?
So moved to approve, Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Muton, and a second by Councilman Tate. Is there any discussion?
Another question, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, Dr. Joe said that we purchased this property somewhere back around nineteen ninety?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just curious what the land value was for this. The other question I had, the funding source. I thought I understood that DD6 was going to fully fund the one percent, but on this write-up, it's talking about us funding half of the one percent.
Yeah, after he stated it twice, I thought I'd let it run. Our CFO and our public works director thought, from discussions, that we were going to pay fifty percent of that one percent, which we're prepared to do and made the recommendation here. But Dr. Majalani is willing to pay for it, we get it. Okay, so we're good. We'll work with them on the land. Anything else you want to do, Doc? Okay, just checking.
Can we amend the motion to include DD6 paying a hundred percent of the one percent?
Do we need to do that? Is it written that way? It should be? Okay. Would you change your motion, please?
I'd like to change my motion, rescind my motion, that DD6 will totally fund the one percent of the project.
And you second that?
Correct.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor, if there's no more discussion?
I've got one more question, Mayor.
Okay.
So I'm assuming the city of Beaumont's going to donate a hundred percent of the land for no cost?
I don't know if they're going to want to own the land, that they, I mean, we talked about this months ago, but it just formally, I guess, brought it to us last week. So we need to talk about, would the city of Beaumont retain ownership? Would we need to, you know, get it in the Drainage District's hands?
I think we've talked about this, and it's going to be easier for us to continue. It's going to be easier because of property laws for us to continue to own the land and make use of it for the detention pond. If we have to turn the land over to DD6, then we've got to go through and offer the land up for purchase to more than just DD6. So it's going to be a lot cleaner if we keep ownership and put the detention pond on it, it's to our citizens.
And because it benefits our citizens.
And I support that, only with the understanding that, like Dr. Joe said, with those guys doing a hundred percent of the maintenance, they'll keep.
Yeah.
That's because we have to own the land, you know, the maintenance, but anyway, we can discuss this later.
We got time today, boss.
Yeah, because, again, you know, we have this deadline, artificial, well, it's a true deadline, but it's not something we set, so we're trying to put this together as we go, and submit the application timely, but yeah, let's talk about these issues now, because, you know, you can submit an application, sometimes depending on the agency, it's hard to amend it.
Right.
As you go, sometimes they don't even let you amend it, so if this is an issue, it's better to talk about it here.
One of the issues, we decided to go ahead and fund the hundred percent, the one percent, is because of the land, I mean, you turning over the land to DD six, so, or you can give us easement over the land, doesn't matter.
Can we lease it?
Get lease? Ninety-nine-year lease?
Maybe dollar for, I don't know, I have to check our legal team.
Lease for a nominal amount?
Either lease us the land, or give us some of the land, and that's the only way we can maintain it, we have to maintain something that DD six either own, or have easement over. That's why we decided to go ahead and fund the full hundred percent, one percent on the project.
Mayor, I, I notice that the...
Just one second, councilman, you have, we have something else that needs to be?
I think Mrs. Reed is saying an easement would work, we think, and we'd like for the Drainage District, that's what they do, to maintain this property, they know how to do it, we don't manage anything that big, even Drainage District, they can't drain it, just through the City of Beaumont, we don't, you know, maintain, so they're all Drainage District Six's infrastructure, so if we could legally work it out to where the Drainage District would maintain it.
Whether it be a lease or an easement?
Yeah, whatever, the cleanest way to do it, I think Mrs. Reed, you know.
If, if they want us to do an easement, it just have to be the description of the land and the purpose, we're giving them, you know, it has to be clearly defined, and there will be no funds involved, and a lease, of course, there would have to be some type of consideration and exchange for that.
Okay, so I think our legal teams need to talk about that, please, Dr. Mas.
I just wanna make sure we're not stuck maintaining this property, that's a lot of land to mow and keep up, that we're not set up to do.
True, we agree.
Can the motion reflect that we would not maintain the land?
We hear the marching orders, and we agree with you, so it's just a matter of our staff, and, and our legal counsel getting with Mr. Harfield, who represents the Drainage District, and trying to work this out.
Okay, Councilman Gatz?
Well, the proposed intergovernmental agreement that's in our packet already says that the Drainage District is gonna pay the one percent contribution, so that's just a discrepancy between the description provided, and what the intergovernmental agreement says, but we could also include in the intergovernmental agreement either lease or an easement, and probably need to revise this to reflect that.
Ms. Reed, you wanna speak to that, or, I, I thought it did say that they were gonna pay the full one percent.
It does.
So that's why I'll ask if we had to do a motion, because, yeah, change the motion.
Well, it doesn't, the local agreement, it does not, it wasn't reflected, I guess, in the report given.
Okay.
The local agreement.
Is what is, takes precedent, okay.
Yeah, we wanna do this for the rest of Beaumont, we did a motion, as far as the recent easement article, if it, that's a change concern, then you can make that extension afterwards.
Yeah, there is language in number eight that talks about land purchases, improvements thereon, speaks to being conveyed in fee simple to the district, so I think we're gonna need to work on number eight, which we can, if we just have your authority to move forward, we'll hopefully amend this interlocal agreement to reflect the two changes that you brought up, which we agree with.
Okay, do we need to change the motion?
No, council has approved our agreement before, and we.
We work it out.
As long as it's not substantially different from what, what was, what you, that's what to do, I think it's clear that we're approving it based upon the condition that DD six maintains it based upon that condition at all.
Well, well, it is a substantial difference conveying the land in fee simple, and just conveying a lease or an easement, so I, I don't know the best way to handle that, but I think we've all agreed that that needs to happen.
Why don't you just put that in your motion, Councilmember Muton, just to clarify, that we will work the agreement to, to where it benefits both, and that we will do an easement or a lease for the land.
So, I would like to.
Revise again, please.
Revise my motion to reflect whichever way the land will be maintained by DD six, that we will approve this motion.
You second that, Councilman Pate, okay.
Second.
Did you have something before we vote, Councilman?
I did, but number eight addresses the legal responsibilities assumed by the district, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, okay, all right, the motion and a second is on the floor with those two revisions, but I believe one of them's really not a revision, because it's already in the agreement, but that's okay, it's clarified, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, thank you, next item, please.
Okay, Mayor and Council, item number two is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Texas General Land Office for a new water treatment plant. As you know very well, Hurricane Harvey severely impacted the city and our ability to produce treated water, in order to increase resiliency within the system, a new west end water treatment plant to work in conjunction with our existing water plant located here on Pine Street, on the east side of town, is proposed. The proposed new plant would be located out of the areas flooded by Harvey, the plant would use raw water from the LMBA Canal System to produce treated water, and would eventually replace the current low groundwater treatment system. The estimated cost of the project is almost ninety-nine million dollars, with a required one percent match in the amount of almost a million dollars. I'd like to thank Bart Barkowiac, Molly Villarreal, Todd Semino, Tim Ocknechek, Mike Harris, public management, who's rep, representing us, Dr. Masalani, when he was here, a lot of people that, a lot of hard work goes into these submittals, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? Councilman Gatz?
In order to have water to go through this plant, we're gonna be getting it from the LMBA, is that correct?
That's our plan.
All right, is, well, there's no other option, is there?
No.
Okay, so, we will be purchasing that water from LMBA?
Yes.
Are we gonna lock LMBA into a long-term price arrangement, or is that something that's subject to going up every year, or do we know?
It is subject to being going up, it depends on how long the agreement's for, it'd be presumptuous of us to reach out and start negotiating an agreement without approval here today, but if you, if the council grants us approval, we'll start talking to them, that's even premature as well, because, number one, by the time we could get approval, engineer the project, start construction, you're probably talking at least two years down the road, and construction's probably gonna take two to three years, so we're talking about probably, probably five years if this thing is approved, so it'd be premature to reach out to LMBA at this time. Now, we have a great relationship with them, and other cities contract with them, so does some industry, so that's what they're there for, and yes, we would reach out to them and negotiate with them.
Other questions, council? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, item number three, please.
Item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Jefferson County Drainage District Number Six for the proposed South Park Drainage Project, and to submit an application to the Texas General Land Office for funding for the project. This item was discussed recently with the city council at an off-site work session, the project would focus on creating a new, what is called a river diversion, tying into the existing storm drainage system that serves South Park, the City of Beaumont would be the primary grant recipient, the City of Beaumont Drainage District Six agreed to split the required one percent match, and the estimated project cost is forty-nine million, funds are available in the capital program if the grant application is approved. Again, we appreciate Drainage District Six and their work on this, with our staff, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you have heard the reading of number three, is there a motion, please?
So moved to approve, mayor.
Thank you, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, mayor. I'm a little sure Dr. Joe doesn't wanna pay the whole one percent on this one.
There's no land involved, anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, all right, if there's no other questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion also carries unanimously, item number four, please.
Item number four is to consider a resolution approving the purchase of twenty-five vehicles for use in various city departments, replacement vehicles are requested through the city's budget process, and our fleet manager, who is here, Jeff Harville, he and our CFO, Todd Semino, are the main ones that review the request, and evaluate the vehicles to be replaced, and the vehicles under this proposal will be purchased from Sealsby Ford in the amount of one million twenty-six thousand six hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Pricing was obtained through what is known as the Goodbye Purchasing Cooperative, which provides cities and political subdivisions the means to purchase equipment at volume pricing. Funds were budgeted in the Capital Reserve, the Water Utilities Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, you have heard the reading of number four, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I noticed where you're splitting this up amongst the Capital Reserve, Water Utilities, and Solid Waste, typically it appears that you charge the vehicles back to the department that uses them, so how does that work, does this money get redirected back to the Capital Reserve?
It does, we do that every year for every piece of equipment, the Capital Reserve pays for most vehicle purchases, equipment purchases, and then the enterprise funds, which are supposed to be self-sufficient, and pay for themselves, which, which they both do, the water fund, solid waste fund, so they'll pay for their vehicles, and then the Capital Reserve pretty much pays for everything else.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, and we need to have a public hearing on this item, if you'll please read the caption, I'll open the floor.
Okay, Mayor and Council, you have an ordinance that you're going to consider, and it's an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating an area as the Suez WTS, which stands for Water Treatment Solutions, so the Suez WTS USA Incorporated Reinvestment Zone pursuant to the Texas Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act, Texas Tax Code, Chapter Three Twelve, providing tax incentives, providing for severability, and providing for repeal, and Mayor and Council, we would ask that you conduct a public hearing at this time to receive comments on the proposal to establish the Suez WTS USA Inc. Project Clear Reinvestment Zone, and afterwards that you consider approving an ordinance establishing the reinvestment zone for the purpose of offering economic incentives, so at this time, if you hold the public hearing, we'd appreciate it.
All right, I'll open the floor to this public hearing as read, is there any citizen who wishes to speak in this public hearing? Okay, there appears to be no one, I'll close the public hearing, and do you need to read anything else for the, for the ordinance?
No, ma'am, you, the council discussed this item in an executive session within the last two or three weeks, and I've read the caption of the ordinance, I'd like to thank Chris Boone for his work on this, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council, is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. All right, that concludes our general business items, I will now open the floor for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make pu, public comment today, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green little slip and hand it to the city clerk, she will call out your name, and as I mentioned earlier, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes.
Mayor, I have two citizens that want to speak at the same time, Robert Steve Dunn, senior, sixty-three, forty, Durango Drive, Beaumont, Texas, and Darrell Antoine, seventy-nine, sixty, Silver Leaf Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay. Mr. Dunn, Mr. Antoine? And as I mentioned earlier, the green light will come on when you approach the podium, can you make that happen, councilman? Councilman? Okay, can you make that happen? Sorry, all right, and the red light will come on when your time is up, thank you so much.
All right, good afternoon, I'm Darrell Antoine, I am a trustee for BISD, Mr. Dunn is also a trustee, we were actually confused on why the city is choosing to stop working with us when it comes to the crossing guards, because our children is the most precious commodity that we have, and the streets belong to the city, and so we wanted to make sure that our kids are safe. I was told by a councilman that the reason why he brought this up is because you guys had a charter that said you was divorcing yourself from BISD, now, we also understand that that charter is years old, because we've been working with you guys for over twenty-five years, and for ninety thousand dollars, for you to stop protecting the citizens was kinda, kinda alarming to us. We've, we've done over three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of business by, with MOUs that we have with the city, for emergencies and everything else, and so we just didn't understand this part, but we went on and signed a resolution, but we're actually not happy with it, we're asking that you guys take a look at it, because we wanna continue working with the city on all aspects, even when it comes to emergencies. Mr. Dunn?
Well, we just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a misunderstanding about this charter, that was over thirty years old, and apparently the understanding that we received was that, that was back when the city had more to say about the running of the district itself, had nothing to do with supporting the district. Now, we, we have partnered, we have a MOU with the, the city, and we partnered with you guys doing hurricanes, you know, disasters, to help the city out, and we had expenses here, including providing buses, drivers for our evacuation, shelter supplies, shelter personnel to oversee the situation, and also damage to some of our buses due to city firemen driving our buses through water that was too high. Now, as Darrell said, we, the expense to BISD was almost four hundred thousand dollars, the district has, excuse me, the city has reimbursed us seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-six cent, now, the percentage that was left due is almost two hundred thousand dollars, so we just wanted to make sure that you understood when you voted to no longer partner with the district, that's, that's fine, but the understanding of what you were disallowing is including that. that but not helping us anymore. So, we're just trying to understand that. You are city councilman of Beaumont, city mayor of Beaumont. These are city children of Beaumont, and city streets of Beaumont. Thank you.
Is that all you wanted to say? Because there are two of you. If you needed more time, I would give it to you.
So, we just, I'm sorry. We just wanted to make sure that when you voted, because I'm understanding that that wasn't fully understood when the city council and the mayor and you guys voted. So, we wanted to make sure that you understood that that old charter had something to do when the city actually helped run the district.
Okay.
And when that no longer was a fact, it was set up so that you can divorce yourself from that part of it, not helping the district out. Now, you guys need to understand that we were concerned about it, because we are responsible for the students of this city, the safety of the students of this city. And it was said that a comment was made, I wasn't here, so I don't know, about private schools. My daughter went to private school from pre-k three all the way up to the eighth grade, and I've never seen a private school student walk to school, ever.
Well, even, even...
And even if they did, well, I understand, but even if they did, they're still children. And the way that our people are looking at this is that, okay, well, we not going to support the kids? These are not BISD streets, but these are BISD students, and they have to cross those streets. So, we thought we should share in that, since the city council and the mayor supports the entire city.
Understand. And I assume that you know that it was not a unanimous vote.
Right, yeah. We, I watched it.
Well, I was just going to say, if the side that, they can bring it back if they so choose to.
Well, basically, Mayor, that's why we're here. We're hoping, we're hoping that you guys...
But this is not a post-it item, so I really can't have a discussion. I'm sorry.
But that's what we wanted to say. You know, we're hoping that you guys take another look at it, and not for BISD, but for the children. We thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
And I'd like to look back, Ms. Fressard, on that meeting. I don't remember the charter being discussed, but I could be wrong. I thought it was due to finance, finances.
I'll go back.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
Okay. If there's no other citizen who wishes to speak, I'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I'd like to ask the city manager is concerning occupancy of this room and how we determine how many people can come in here during a council meeting or during a planning and zoning meeting. Are we operating under the governor's direction of seventy-five percent occupancy as far as this room is concerned?
No, we're fifty. The governor's order says for public facilities, unless it's changed, in the last one, it was fifty percent, but that's what I remember. And if you want to check that, Mr. Reed, I'd appreciate it, but I think I did check it, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Cooper told me that it's seventy-five percent for restaurants but fifty percent for public facilities.
Okay, so...
So, we need to check that, but that's what my recollection is, and if it's changed, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, so if it's fifty percent, I counted the seats, there's eighty-four of them in here, and so we're looking at up to forty-two people being in here at fifty percent, I guess, which I think we're less than that today.
I don't think we've turned anybody away.
Well, I know we did yesterday, because there was people in the overflow conference room.
Yesterday?
Yeah, for planning and zoning.
Oh.
And, you know, I guess we did today, because Mr. Dunn and...
They were sitting in here.
Okay, okay, they were in here. All right, all right, good. All right, so fifty percent.
That's what I think, but we'll check it.
Okay.
It's supposed to be where you sit, where the reserves signs say, and we need to be telling people that as they come in, and they are supposed to wear a mask.
The other announcements I want to make is the Dallin West Neighborhood Association will be meeting tonight via Zoom. We had hoped to meet in person at the Rogers Park Community Center, but elections are going on, so we'll be doing Zoom again tonight for our meeting. And I want to express condolences to Steve and Nancy Hoffman, because they, their son passed away unexpectedly, and I give them my deepest condolences. I also want to express my personal beliefs on the issue that was brought by Mr. Antoine and Mr. Dunn. You know, I agree that they're all our children. We all have a responsibility to make sure that our children get to school safely, but it is primarily BISD's responsibility to see that their children get to school safely, whether, and that's whether it's on a bus, whether it's in a carpool, whether they're walking or riding a bike. It's our responsibility to build the roads, which we do. The time that this crossing guard program was initiated was before BISD had a police force. They do now. There have been times in the past twenty years that BISD has faced financial issues. They're financially solvent now, and so that is what motivated me in part to, you know, support Councilmember Taylor's motion to, you know, do a stair step down, getting away from funding the crossing guard program. We didn't spring on them all at once. We agreed to provide the funding for this year, and then fifty percent for next year, and then fifty percent of that the following year. So, you know, we're giving them time to prepare for the adjustments that they need to make in their budget. But, you know, it is true that there are private schools, charter schools, parochial schools that, and there's going to be more as education continues to evolve. So, what I see there is that if the city is going to provide crossing guards for BISD, that these other charter schools and parochial schools would be able to come and justifiably ask that that be provided for them as well. So, I think it's best that the schools take care of making sure their children get to school safely, and the city does the infrastructure. And we have to keep in mind one overriding factor. It's all taxpayer dollars. It's whether it comes from BISD or the city of Beaumont, the taxpayers are the ones funding this, so it's just, you know, which pot you're getting your money out of. You know, as far as the taxpayers are concerned, I would think that they just want to make sure that the crossing guard program continues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Rineal.
Thank you, Mayor. On the crossing guard situation, let's see here, Article seventeen, Section nineteen discusses the divorcement of the Beaumont Independent School District with the city of Beaumont, and that was repealed on September the sixteenth, two thousand and three, so I don't know where we're going back many, many years ago. That wasn't that far ago. Next comment I'd like to make, whenever we were originally doing the crossing guards going way back, like Councilmember Getz said, BISD did not have a police force. Now, those guys have a police force, tune of about three-point-five million dollars. You go back and look at the information on their website, it specifically talks about one of the things they're charged with is managing the crossing guard portion. Next comment I'd like to make, out of the schools that BISD has, it's my understanding about eight of those have been turned over to charter schools, because they've been filling schools, and my understanding is we are still providing crossing guards for those. So, I'm not clear on what the difference is between a charter school that is ran by BISD or is owned by BISD versus every other charter school in the city. So, I think we were just getting in a lot of gray areas, and at the end of the day, it's BISD's responsibility to get kids to school safely and properly educate them, and I just don't think that's something the city of Beaumont taxpayers should be paying for twice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Felshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we all understand that we're in a election cycle. The numbers are extremely high for early voting. I think it's thirty-five million. And regardless of your political views, values, or affiliation, I think we all agree that the political process is a good thing, and more participation is a good thing. It's encouraging to see the numbers going up, people, more people getting involved in the political process. That's a, that's a good thing. And so, let me encourage everyone to, if you haven't voted yet, to please vote. Early voting goes until October the thirtieth, and it's a responsibility that we all have. So, let me encourage everyone to please vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Mayor. I will reiterate what Mayor Protim Felshaw said about voting. It's a right, it's a privilege, it's a responsibility. So, we should take the time, and when you think that you might have to wait a little while, just do a little flashback about some of the sacrifices that have been made, so that you get that opportunity to wait a while. And if you do, then that ought to encourage you to take the time to get out and appreciate the opportunity to vote for whoever you want to vote for. As the mayor said earlier, when we were talking about this, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm going to continue to encourage everybody to see their doctors and do whatever they need to do. As we know, cancer can kill us, and we've lost a lot of great people because of it. And if there's some, if there's one thing we can do, is to try to prevent it from getting to a stage where you can't do anything about it, and going to your doctor and getting tested is the way to do it, and I will encourage you to do that. And again, we appreciate, I want to say, we appreciate all the things that our city staff continues to do after, after storm, after storm, after storm, picking up the debris that they're still picking up. They're doing a great job. And so, when you see somebody from the city, it's okay to stop and say, hey, I really appreciate you. And that, not just the folks in the police department, the fire department, but those that are out there picking up the trash, picking up the debris, they're helping us beautify our community, and they do a great job doing it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
I'd just like to encourage everyone to go out and vote. Those who have not, I say to you that don't wait until Election Day. Cash your vote while you can. Tomorrow is not promised to anyone. Cash your votes. Every vote counts. If you want change, you have to be a part of making that change, and that's done first at the polls, because those who are elected, whether it appears to be or not, they represent you. That's our responsibility, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to send condolences to the Knighton family, the loss of Mrs. Geraldine Knighton Russell. And again, I'd like to echo to please get out and vote. Don't wait. Make your voice count. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Two things that I overlooked, this Saturday, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission is holding a hazardous waste collection event. It's going to be in Bridge City. It's at ten-twenty-nine West Roundbunch Road, which is the Bridge City intermediate school parking lot. This is an opportunity for citizens to get rid of hazardous waste at their homes, paint, car batteries, oil, that sort of thing. So, this is a way to dispose of all that refuse safely. So, if you want to do that, that's going to be from eight AM to one PM. The other thing, very excited to see that the Symphony of Southeast Texas will be performing in person, not via Zoom, not virtually, or anything like that. They're going to be at the Civic Center this Saturday at seven-thirty. It's their Cirque Spooktacular, which is going to have a Halloween theme, but it's going to be a really, really neat performance. So, if you haven't gotten your tickets, you need to get them, and hopefully I will see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Some of us, and I just want to let everyone know, heard a warning system that was very loud when we were coming into City Hall today, so I just want to let everyone know, if anyone hears it, it's not anything to be alarmed about. As I understand it, it is a lightning warning system that was put in by Jefferson Energy, and it basically lets them know when there is lightning within five to seven miles of the plant, and then it goes off again when it's safe for the employees to return to work. So, this is on the Orange County side, Jefferson Energy, and we can hear it, especially if you're right there on the river, which is where we were. It's pretty loud. They said they may turn it down, but some, it just said warning, and it was kind of a little unnerving. We didn't know what it was. So, if anyone says anything about it, anyone that lives in the downtown area or, you know, in the near area that might hear it, just let them know it is just a lightning warning system for Jefferson Energy on the Orange County side, and we can hear it fairly well right across the river. And with that, that's all I have today, and I do not believe we have an executive session, correct? Okay, no executive session today. So, thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.